Meeting called to order. ICE made the spawning president call a work session to order under the Open Public Meetings Act at 6:16 PM. This is to advise the general public and instruct that if we record in the minutes that in compliance with the chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, the Roney Board of Education calls to be posted at the Bear Hall, Roney Post Office, Marygold School, Lyman Bingham School, and Curtis Downing School, and advertise in the retrospective meeting notice setting for the time, date, and location of this meeting. Roll call board members?
Patricia Dare here. Charles Buckheim?
Here.
Naomi Davidson here. Maria Panterola absent. Patricia Smith here.
Samantha Spolling here.
We have five members present, four former, and four absent.
So the first item on our work session agenda is confirmation of the attendance of the 2013 workshop and exhibition to be held October 22nd to 24th at the Atlantic City Convention Center. Do, I guess, did you just want to know from board members who was planning on attending?
I have down already that Charles, Patricia Dare, Samantha Spolling, Naomi Davidson, Angel Beatty. I wasn't sure if you were confirmed.
I'm gonna try. I will give you a confirmation.
Okay.
I wanted to do when I did my August, my October vacation. I think I might be around.
Okay.
And then I checked it. So it's just, alright, and then. Done.
I haven't listed.
So everyone listed here as staying both nights?
Yes.
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 I want to be able to attend as many workshops as possible.
Me too. I want to go to as many classes.
I'm excited.
Especially the day's workshop.
She's the keynote speaker.
The keynote speaker.
Yes.
The keynote speakers are always fabulous. Even, remember the drawling that they did? Like that was, I always think about that. It was incredible. Okay, so, right now, John, Maria, and we're waiting on Pat, right?
I have to look.
So.
What suggestion? No fondue dinner?
No fondue dinner?
I think that was the Pittsburgh's.
Yeah. We went out and there was much cheese.
It was, I think for the price, I didn't think the food was that good. The burger, the person.
I agree. There's plenty of stuff down there. You pick. We'll go.
I'll put a big Italian or a Flavio.
That's fine. Alright, so we're just waiting on Maria and John, and I'll reach out to them.
And Lynn.
And Lynn. Oh, excuse me. And Lynn. I'll reach out to them and let them know. Lynn didn't tell me that she was going to be away today. And I told her I'd give her a buzz tomorrow. So I'll ask for that. Okay, number four is Joanne called me last week to bring, to let me know that the rod grants are available again?
Round four.
Round four. And, um, so she wanted to know what the board, or how the board felt about maybe putting, you know, the kitchen off and trying to put it in for the rod grant to get it to be paid at about 40%. Because that would be one of the, a high area that we would most likely be approved. Stop me, Joanne, if I'm saying the wrong things.
I actually went to a meeting today at ASBO in Robbinsville, and they had SDA, DOE, and attorney there, and ASBO, John Doniu there, speaking about it. And what I can tell you is their priority is going to be on level one projects, which, and whatever you put into your project application, and might want to think about either, instead of putting them all into one, even separating them into two different projects, they're going to need to be 100% eligible under that level one type of project, where it's focusing on health and safety issues.
So can I ask you and Butch to tell us what a level one would be?
Roof.
Roof.
Windows.
Mm-hmm.
Exterior structure, I want to say like the pointing on the older buildings.
That we need done?
Yeah. So those would all be considered level one projects.
Okay. Kitchen would not be, or would they?
No, I'm pretty sure when I, it would be.
It would be.
Because it's a renovation, but I'll have to double check on, there might be portions of it that they might kick out and say it's a gray area. It would be more level two. So that would be an area that you might want to, we might want to think. And I let Garrison's office know after we talked what we were thinking about doing, with the possibilities on that.
Because we all, we all want these things to happen, but it would be great to get them paid 40%. So I thought it made most sense to say, hold on, hold on, hold on on construction, and let's go, let's put in for this rod grant so we can get them paid at 40%, but I didn't want to speak for the board. And I, and so I wanted to talk about it here. Because it makes, it makes much more sense to let the, to get 40% paid. And that's just my personal opinion.
Instead of us paying 100%.
Instead of us paying 100%, and we do need windows.
Need windows, need new roof on this one.
We need a new roof.
The fire doors.
Pointing and ceiling.
How about fire doors? Do they?
That's what we've already committed, and they said once you've already committed, you can't.
Alright, well, we're committed. But we do need the pointing, some of our brick, that's brickwork.
Sign brick. Pointing and sealing of both buildings over there.
Okay.
That's your mortar, isn't it?
I don't know what that is.
The brick itself is breaking down where it needs to be resealed to stop the rain from penetrating.
Penetrating, yeah.
Right. And that qualifies under level one.
That's a level one.
Right. So, and just to add a couple of things too, from what I was hearing too. One of the new things too that they did this year, which was a surprise with a lot, some of the people that were getting their budgets back is the SDA was actually throwing in an assessment on the previous rod grants on some of these districts, based on how much they had been, they had received. I don't know all the calculations or ramifications, but Don Doniu feels that they may continue to do that. So although I'm still pretty comfortable with saying we would get 40%, however, I think really our funding might be a little higher than 40%, but right now, they're, the state is actually assessing a 15% charge on what they're granting you. So really, you're not getting the total. And it's all about our economy and the fact that the state doesn't have enough money to fund the budget. So, you know, there, which doesn't seem fair, it doesn't seem right, because you base your projects on, you're expecting this much, and then all of a sudden, oh, now we're tacking on. So you're only going to get 15% of that award. I mean, they're going to charge 85, I should say, 85% of that award amount. But I actually think our district is going to be a little higher than the 40%, so I still am safe in telling you that if we get an eligible project that's approved, we'll get at least the 40% funding on those level one, 100% eligible projects.
So what do you guys think about that?
It makes sense, because if you get 40%, that 40% of that money.
We could do something else.
And the other part of it too is the timeframe, the cutoff for the application is September 4th at noon time. At that point, but we can submit applications, you know, prior to that. That's the cutoff. And what they said is they'll start sending out their approval notices, and actually, we can, there's a form they said that you can send in to find out if what you're thinking about in your project's going to be eligible at that level that you are hoping for. But the approval notices will be coming out between September, October, and November. So depending on how many they receive, and they even said, oh, they could get 700 to 1,000 applications. There's $425 million that is in this round four of the grants. Priority's going to be level one, then level two, which is some of your non-100% related projects. And then there's even a level three. And they more or less said, level three, you know, don't hold your breath too much on that, because that's more of your athletic fields and things like that. What was the other thing?
What was the, what's the likelihood?
Oh, the other, oh, I'm sorry.
What's the likelihood that we would not get accepted for it?
Well, these particular things, I think we're pretty good to get through.
Okay.
Now, the other part of it, once they send out their approval letter, then 30 days you get, you don't get what's called a PEC letter or two, which is more or less the contract saying you're going to accept the grant. And then the districts have up to 18 months to prove that they have the local share, which I've been trying to do, and I'll do again, by putting the money into the capital reserve, so that we'll have that 60% to fund these things, such as the roof, the windows, and all that. So we'll be in good shape. So once we get that approval letter and the contract saying, you know, we're going to accept the award or not, we really will be good to go with getting the paperwork in, because we'll have the local share, we'll have our proof that we have the local share in order to move on with the project. The other thing, in thinking that we were going to move forward with the kitchen too, they were out to take a look at, again, the room and what needs to be done. And I told Garrison that we might be putting a hole on our initial thought that we were going to do it without any kind of state funding, because there wasn't any at that time, that we're looking into applying for the rod grant now. And they said, we kind of expected that. We're not the only district now thinking about that, because they hadn't started the contract or started the project. And they said that they could work around our school schedule, because knowing that we won't know anything until after school starts, and that was kind of like why I wanted that plan B for the whole thing, because I didn't want to be without food service for our kids.
Remember, Liza, what we were saying, now, why are we approving this contract? I'm Joanne Morris. But, you know, that's why. So we are covered for next year.
Yeah. I did not want to be caught without anything there. So, and the one guy that was there said that they could actually work around our schedule, either working on the weekend for any heavy, like floor, where they have to dig up the floor or anything like that. So it's still feasible that they could work on it during the school year. So just, you know, thinking about the county saying, oh, we're going to reduce our deficit, but it's really hard to do that when we're vending out our food and not doing it ourselves.
And that's what came to number nine under personnel, having Val Carmody come back for a little bit. She was, for those of you who don't know, she was our interim business administrator before we hired Joanne. And the reason why she's coming back is she's going to finalize and complete some of the paperwork that she did, that she's like, you know, more, has the expertise and was.
On the previous ones.
On the previous rod grants, and.
Because it took from the time I started here until just the end of this past April to get our first payment on that previous.
And Joanne honestly said, and then the payment didn't match up with the paperwork, so I called back. So I told her that the board would have a problem with Valerie coming in and.
She doesn't expect it's going to take a whole lot of time. But she was the one that organized it and knows.
Makes sense.
Knows it from putting it together.
And she's, yeah, and then maybe we can ask her to help with, you know, a lot of the ones that are coming in too.
Well, actually, yeah, well, the paperwork to the application, actually Garrison is like the pro.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you'll be able to lock the cheques for the paperwork then, for collecting the money.
Now supposedly, they said that they're working on that long process, because there've been nothing but complaints about that whole process. In fact, they're actually going to do more things online. Before, you had to send these huge packets of paper, and now they say, hey, you can scan it and email it to us. I'm like, oh, that's nice. And just mail in anything that had the signatures on it, so they have original signatures. So they're working on making it a little bit more streamlined and not asking for repeated documentation, because that was a complaint too. They kept asking for certificates of insurance from these contractors that are long gone, because the project's been long gone. And everybody in the audience, like other VAs, were saying, oh, they keep asking for it, even though, you know, for current ones. And why is that necessary? And actually, the woman from the SDA said, no, they shouldn't be asking for that anymore until the cutoff is the last invoice from that contractor. So they've got, they've got issues they're working through, and from years of complaints, I think, they're starting to get that process a little bit better than what it's been. So I'm hopeful. And in fact, Rod, I, and Ollie had even mentioned to me, because I told him it was so long in just getting that first payment on the old rod grants, that he said, once we submit some more documentation, he'll see what he can do to try to push it along so we can get our money faster. So I'm looking forward to that.
Any other questions for Joanne at this point? That we can go over the agenda for. Oh, well, everybody has a pink sheet in front of them. I asked Mr. Ainucci to do this, because there were so many new hires with this being a big retirement year, that I just wanted you to see building-wise what it looks like, instead of, you know, trying to put it together in your head. So Mr. Ainucci has this, so Bingham, Downing, Holt, so that there's even some more on the back there. Just so you know, who is who and who is going where. So we're going to have Mrs. Field is going to give us a brief, a brief presentation. Naomi and Mr. Ainucci are working on the library, getting the list of our books. Maybe we can fax that over as soon as possible, if they did not already do it, because I don't believe they have.
I think with John Field, is that going to do any questions? She's just going to explain basically what she did, and if you have any questions for her after you do that? Because I think I sent, did you each get a?
Yes. Anti-bullying, self-assessment?
Do you have other forms that were sent?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do I, do you have any questions about that stuff?
I know that this is, I was actually part of doing this in my district, and I know that.
So this is the district's HIV, this has to be submitted. So once we approve this tonight.
It'll be submitted?
It will be submitted with electronic and tomorrow, but tomorrow.
So this is like the assessment the district had about our harassment, intimidation, bullying? It's right here.
So you have a copy?
No, you have a copy as well.
Oh, it's something you gave me again?
Yes.
It's nice and big, so you can call me.
It's nice and big, so the people that.
So the top's as commiserate program for value?
Yes. So it's just, you get like a total, a rating, so out of set, possible 75 points. It looks like we scored a 63, which is.
It's pretty good.
Which is pretty good.
Is there a vote or do you have, there's some things you need to tweak on there? But there's also some things, you know.
So it lets you know, you know, what, what needs to be done so we can improve our score for next year. But obviously, this is our first time doing this. This is everybody's first, every district's first time doing a self-assessment. So not a bad score at all. So she's just going to go over that?
She'll explain exactly what components went into that course and how she determined how to score. And then answer any questions. And there's one for Volz, one for Downing, one for Bingham. And then we'll do a, next board meeting, I'll do the district HIV report. We have to do twice a year. I think Nancy did one earlier, probably back in January.
Yes.
And then we'll do another one.
So if it's okay with everybody, I'll move to property and transportation, and ask if anybody has any questions at this time.
One second.
Okay. So I am on page four of the new agenda.
Okay.
Page four, property and transportation. That's the first one, our new business.
Well, Claire, I'll put on there to clarify the facility use, that when RYAA is not using the AQI.
So it looks like there's some transportation, fire doors, and disposal equipment. Does anybody have any questions on the property and transportation? And personnel, which was why I asked Mr. Ainucci to do the pink form, was we have a lot of substitutes.
A lot of people just retired.
Retiring, and they want, they want to come back to be.
Not ready to retire.
No, the good thing is if you put her right on the list, they don't have to do that whole fingerprinting.
Right.
They're just smart.
It's better that way.
The system involves writing it all in. Some of them aren't really interested in, you know, maybe not write it September 2nd, but, you know.
So there's some family leave act. And then this is, I believe, what you do about 100 interviews?
There's about 100, yeah, close, almost 100. Somewhere between 110 to 112.
So they've been busy. So all of our, so everything after this evening will be taken care of? We need one.
I'll need a media specialist.
Media specialist, long-term sub.
For all-term sub, provided for a month or two. If there's a possible, another teacher, another person, possibly early fall, so.
So at this time, we're good for everything we know about, except for the one long-term sub, which we'll have it for our August meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to say that I spoke to Mr. Ainucci. You'll notice that two of the, two of the hires that we have are on step two. I don't know if anybody saw that or realized that, step two. The reason why that they're on step two is they worked for us as long-term subs the entire school year this year. So we thought that it would only be fair to put them on step two, because quite frankly, this is their second year in the district with us. And since they both did such a wonderful job, we decided that they.
That's fair.
Would have a full-time job with us. I didn't know if anyone realized that.
When it says certain progress, what does that mean?
That means they probably just, they probably just are recent, you know, recent graduates. There's still waiting for the state, so they're.
Just sending.
Yeah. No, it's sent. They have everything, so on the website, it just says in progress.
Oh, okay.
That means that all the stuff's up there for you. So they're going to get their, you know.
They've done all their.
Yes. Yes. So what will happen is, on August 1st, if they're, they still didn't get it, then we could, the district could go ahead and call. Okay. And put it, and we can, we put a rush to that. If need be.
On number 14, the change in school secretary's contract, does that also reflect a increased salary?
Yeah, it's about, all told, we said it was about between $10,000 and $11,000, $23,000.
So the two, Bingham and Downing, were 10-month positions.
Right.
So they're added to 12 months, and then, so who was with us?
It said 10. They were basically 11 months.
Sure, it was 10, 10 plus 4.
10 plus, yeah.
It's kind of, we're, you know, we have, we have a new district, all new administrations in the building, especially Bingham and Downing. There's some other responsibilities, I mean, you can talk with Joanne, some other district responsibilities that I want to have all three secretaries of the buildings pick up. What are, you know, what are the things they can work on throughout the year? Stuff that can be directly confined to the buildings.
And then number 15 is this white sheet of other, other staff maintenance.
Which, which white what?
It's the white towards the back.
I think it was right after the.
I got it.
Maybe put a green in.
Unaffiliated staff?
Yes. Then there's some per diem.
Right.
So is this per diem rate, what they get per day?
Yes.
Okay. For IEPs? That's number 16 that was added. We have some IEPs that needs to be done.
What page are you on now?
I'm on page seven, this is top.
Okay.
Number 16.
Still in the personnel.
Yes.
Okay.
And number 17?
What's the EPI?
It's, uh, I think that was like crisis intervention training, it'd be sent to some terror to, I told you back in May.
That's not.
And she's already, yeah, I don't know what the specifics are, but it's crisis prevention intervention, something like that. Which one I have is done, because anytime something pops up.
Then she gets the answer.
We're already, we're already going to use her again, I think, in late, probably July, to train some of the staff that she can get to back at the end of the school year, so.
New staff.
Yeah.
Right?
Anybody's involved with these issues.
That's cool.
It's already paying off.
Is everyone comfortable if I go to finance? What's number six, the hardware schools charging?
That's a common resolution that the private schools will ask us to do. It has to do with not charging extra for their lunch program. It's included in their tuition.
Okay. And then a lot of people ask what the employee assistance program is, number eight. That's that extra, extra fee that we pay to have our employees be able to go to like psychology services or time management, or, yeah, financial, it's a good program. It's all confidential, yeah.
Talk to me about number 13. I just need clarification, why we're using the honor school nursing services? Is that if we have school out sick?
Mm-hmm.
They got, okay, that's what I thought when I just put in short.
Do some kids need a 101 nurse? Is that what, or would that be?
For this, no, this would be with the.
Just let's see if one of the, if the thing was out, and it's not.
It's like a substitute for the nurses.
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Number 21 is something that is important and new to the district. Do we want to talk about that?
Under what?
Under, I'm still under, but I'm on page 10 now. Go to the bottom.
The lunchtime, it's a point-of-sale software system that can handle food service sales. Our district, I think, is one of the few around that still use the.
We're in our work sessions still. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be done. No, it's not closed session, it's just a work session. They'll have to sit here.
Just to get into the automated point-of-sale system, where students will come up, it'll automatically run into, be rung up into the register. The integration between our database, as far as the student is concerned, and even integration with the calculation of the whole sales process, it will be more efficient, less errors, less time consumed in even the money collection, because now the money can be taken right into the lunchroom and given to the person at the, at the register and entered in to that student on there as well. Almost all schools have gone to some type of point-of-sale system. So I think it's the way we need to move into that direction to become more efficient.
Streamlines open.
Yeah.
Processing. It eliminates a lot of human error, tallying stuff up with faculty or.
So that it was just, it was just something new?
That something could happen. They would give us something.
As we progress, yes, yes.
Take them all to the.
Credit.
Yeah. Like an ID, like when they do a training.
That was my. So I think it's the direction that is good to move into.
The number 22, the math testing is what we do to, that's a renewal to, for all of our elementary school students with reading and math. Is this moving? 23 moving? Want to talk about that?
Yeah, Barb is, Barb was here a couple of months ago. She did the Allah presentation with Lori Heinz and everything. We're going to ship Barb to go from two days a week to three days a week. She currently works two, 7-hour days, she works 14 hours. We're going to increase that to another third day. The thing about Barb is great is she said she's only here for seven hours, but she'll do about four hours of work at night. She's sending me stuff on weekends, she's calling, she's doing a ton of stuff, but she loves it here. We love having her here. Everybody, it's amazing that less than a year, every single person that has come in contact with her has done some wonderful things to say about her as a person, but also just a bag of tricks that she has. And you saw that presentation, how she's.
Yes.
And now with two RCI teachers, one in each building, she's going to work with them, you know. We're going to need her to work with both those people now, because we have two new people at those positions. She's been training now all this past spring and now in the early summer, but it's important to have her still.
And she's funded by NCLA as well.
Right.
Yes.
So that's great. We were going to cancel our July board event meeting and just go ahead with the August one. Number 24 is just, and Joanne, you know I'm around, so if you need me to sign anything, I'm here.
And I'll send, I'll send that email, that newsletter out to update my, and then collaborate.
So under curriculum, it's just some homebound and bedside instruction for some students. So, under curriculum, it's just some homebound and bedside instruction for some students, and that is it, there's no need to go into executive session, are they plenty?
Yes, it's time.
Okay, so at this time, I need a motion to adjourn.